Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I'm mute.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Seifert.
Here.
Chair Dickerson.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, prior to moving forward with the agenda, please note the following. All written comments should have been submitted to the city planning staff via email by 3:00 P.M. this afternoon. If you wish to comment on an agenda item, please use the raised hand icon on the Zoom platform. Once you're recognized, you will then be unmuted and allowed to comment on business at hand in the order received. Maximum comment time is three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. If you're calling in and wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand by downing nine and identify yourself when unmuted. There will be a change to the agenda item, to the agendas, item numbers. Item number three, I believe it is, of the Donati Area Nine Specific Plan Amendment tentative track map has been removed from the agenda for this evening. So anybody who's here for that, by all means, you can stick around to watch our proceedings. But if you're there specifically for that, that has been continued off calendar. We don't know when it's going to be coming back, but it has been removed for the evening. So that being said, we are going to move on to the approval of the minutes for the Planning Commission July 21st meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look those over? And does anyone make any changes? Or do we have a motion to approve them? I move that we approve the minutes.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I think we need a roll call.
Oh, do we need a roll call for that? I'm sorry.
Please. Commissioner Seifert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco.
Aye.
Chair Dickerson.
Aye. Moving on to the public comment period, each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. These are for items that are not already on the agenda. So if any attendee wishes to comment on something not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. And if it's things four that are already on the agenda, then you should hold off for that agenda item. I do see one hand raised. Dana?
Yes, that's Hazel Davalos. So I've unmuted you, Hazel, so you should be able to speak now.
Okay. Hazel, you have three minutes. Once again, we have removed item number three from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, commission. So this isn't on the agenda, so I should be able to address it in general public comment, I'm assuming? I will speak to the Donati project. I think myself and other members of the public saw the agenda and expected that to be here today. Hello, my name is Hazel with CAWS, and I'm here to voice concerns regarding the proposed Donati H2A housing project that would put 3,600 workers in an area smaller than Prescott Park. Our organization has followed the trends surrounding H2A workers' presence in our city and the resulting impacts on fellow farmworkers and our housing stock in the city. And our stance is that we believe these workers deserve dignified housing and that there's a real opportunity for our city officials to raise the floor beyond the H2A program's federal requirements and ensure guest workers in our community are truly treated like guests with respect. This project does not pass the test for being a safe place for workers to live, nor is it proposed for the right place in the city. Farmworker housing shouldn't be put in a toxic industrial zone on the outskirts of town. Farmworkers aren't something to be pushed out of our neighborhoods. Farmworkers are an essential part of our community. Guest workers who are new to the community shouldn't be isolated from the local community, whether because they're a two-mile walk from any decent store or gathering place or because they're housed in a compound that has few external doors and that these doors that are locked for their quote-unquote "safety." This bars any visits from community agencies that would bring information or resources. These folks must have access to service providers, legal aid, from the comfort and safety of their living space. We see the mistreatment of H2A workers who work alongside our local farmworkers in the fields, and we see that they're vulnerable to exploitation when they're kept isolated from other workers who do know their rights. And ultimately, we're glad to hear that this item's been moved to allow for more time for the public to hear about this project and engage. With a project of this size, there really must be transparency about future plans, considering the scale and density. This is a major project, and the community and surrounding neighbors have not had enough opportunity to weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Heather Widem, Assistant City Attorney. I just want to clarify that that item is not going to be heard tonight. If a member of the public would like to speak on the continuance, the fact that it's being continued, we'd be happy to hear that. But as far as speaking on the merits of the project, whether you think it's a good project or not a good project, or any other thoughts about the project, those would best be heard in the future when the project comes back before your commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Dana, I see we have a second person. Once again, this is for things not on the agenda. And as the city attorney has said, it would be for if you want to comment on item number, what used to be item number three. It really is about whether or not, or the comment has to be focused on being pulled from the agenda, not on the merits of the agenda. So does the additional person want to still make a comment?
So I see two additional people with their hands raised. Grace Chang is next on my screen, so I will allow Grace to speak.
Okay. And I'm assuming that you're setting the timer for three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Grace?
Hi, hello, my name is Grace Chang. I'm a professor at UC Santa Barbara, and my research is primarily about human trafficking. So my first word is just to ask your point. Why is the item agenda being postponed and delayed? And I ask you to consider what the impact is on those of us in the public who have prepared for testimony today and public comment in order to express our opposition to this project. And I understand that you are asking us to address the merits of the continuance, but this is exactly what the question is. Why is the continuance being done so that in the future, we don't necessarily have all of the members of the community who were prepared to speak about and testify about the impacts of such a project on the community? So could you at least address for us, when is the item likely to appear on the agenda again?
Heather, are we able to comment back to public hearing items or public items such as Grace just brought up? Or do we just hear them and move on to the next one?
Well, the commission cannot discuss it or deliberate on it since we're not hearing it tonight, but we certainly can have staff. I believe Mr. Albro is prepared to give a brief explanation for why we have decided to continue the item, if you'd like to hear from Mr. Albro.
You know, let's hear from the other people, and then we can, well, perhaps that will suffice for the other people to raise their hands. So Frank, why don't you go ahead and take it?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. We had received in the past week a number of emailed comments in opposition to the project. They were citing, or they were asserting that it would be an unsafe place for the farmworkers to live, that it would be an undesirable place, and less than residential nature. And in addition to those multiple comments via email, we also received a couple of letters, and the letters were more pointed to SEQA issues and also issues of zoning law and things that dealt more with the process and less directly with the project. And so the staff would like time to review those comments, some of which we only received this afternoon, and be able to adequately respond to those assertions made in various letters. I would like to note that we have discussed the staff's recommendation for continuance with the applicant, and the applicant was accepting that we would be continuing the item to a date uncertain. And that will involve re-noticing the item when it is ready to come back to planning commission.
Thank you very much, Frank. Okay, do we, I see that there are more people who want to comment?
So can we, Chair Dickerson?
Yes.
Does what Mr. Albro just shared with us, does that give us any further indication of an approximate time and date, an approximate date, that that might, given that it's going to require re-noticing all of that?
Frank, do you have something about that?
Oh, I can speak to that, Mr. Chair. So, no, at this point, we don't have a date identified. We received, I think, over 60 letters and emails. So we, as staff, just need time to go through those comments, and we can, you know, we can reach out to CAWS and let them know at the point where we have it ready to go back to the commission. I have been in touch with Hazel previously. So, but at this point, we don't know. We have to go through all the comments received and make sure we have time to adequately address those.
And Dana, you kind of cut out, at least on my end, did you say over 65, or did you say over six?
Oh, no, we received, I think, 65. It was a combination of emails and letters, but there are approximately 65 that we received, and the majority were in just the last day or two. So we just, as staff, need time to go through those letters.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and I do want to mention, Kathleen reminded me that all of the letters and emails we received have been uploaded onto the website. So they are on the city's website, on the agenda where the hearing items were posted for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chang. Dana, do we have somebody else who wants to comment on things that we have not already gone over?
Yeah, it looks like we still have a few hands raised, so I'll just continue down the list. So we have Dan Blau next.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. I'm a little bit confused in that it surprises me that you're dropping it from the agenda as opposed to just simply continuing it. And I would suggest that the proper thing to do would be to pick a date to continue it to. And if you want to come back at that date to continue it again, you could do it, but if you do that, it would avoid you doing it for a renotice. But I don't care if you drop it or you continue it or you renotice it, but I'm just trying to make it a little bit easier on you. But I'm agreeing, considering the comments that we had, especially from CR LA, that I agree that it does need to be continued to allow both myself and the city the opportunity to respond to the comments and criticisms, just so you know. And I will also tell you that it's likely that we will, in the renoticing, we're going to separate the PD from the track map, so it may do two different hearings going forward. Just need to kind of confirm that that's what the staff is planning on doing and to confirm that, yes, we're agreeable to that. And I'm here to answer any questions that the commission might have today.
Thank you very much, Dan. You know, I think I would rather see it dropped and renoticed and to Ms. Chang's point and to Ms. Davalos's point, the, if we set a date and then they line everybody up that they want to to talk and whatnot, and then we continue it again, it puts a burden on them and the other people who might show up. Whereas if we drop it and then we come back with a date certain that it's probably not going to move again, then I think that that would probably be more convenient for the majority of the public. What do you say to that, Dana?
Mr. Chair, I don't disagree. I mean, the fact that we're going to bifurcate the process and have a track map go separate from the PD, that probably makes sense because the track map could go forward rather rapidly, and the PD might take a little more time. But we're agreeable to do that, and it actually makes more sense to us to do that. So to drop it and to renotice it and bifurcate it probably makes the best sense.
Thank you, Dan. Dana?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Dickerson and Commissioners. So we've gotten now into some, you know, more details on this item than I think was anticipated. So what I would recommend is that we have your commission go ahead and take a vote to continue it. My recommendation is to continue it off calendar and that once we, you know, as I mentioned, have a chance to look at the comments we received and speak with the applicant team, we would renotice it for a future date. So if your commission is okay with that, I'd like to go ahead and see if you can move forward.
Do we take the motion and the vote before we listen to the other people who have their hand raised? Or do we hear the other people and then we take the motion and the vote?
We would do the other comments, and then you would do the motion after that.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the next person.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. Since this is becoming a bit of a discussion, I do know we have a couple commissioners who may have a conflict on this item. Probably be best if they go ahead and disclose those conflicts at this time and recuse themselves and not participate in this discussion.
Okay, and how about any ex parte communication? Do we let people know about that at this point also?
You certainly may.
All right, I would like to ask any of the commissioners if they have any ex parte communication with the applicant. I have had a meeting with Mr. Blau.
Mr. Dickerson, I believe we have to recuse ourselves first.
Okay.
Before any other discussion.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that then, those who want to. Go ahead and do so.
I have a financial conflict of interest, so I will be recusing myself if Ms. Edie can inform me when I can return to the Zoom session. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. Any others?
Yes, Chair, this is Tim Seifert. I'm going to be recusing myself for financial issues on this project. And I do need some clarification. Do I just not participate, or do I actually have to get out of the Zoom meeting?
You may stay on the Zoom meeting, but if you could block your screen, if that's possible, and mute yourself.
So I can't look at the screen or listen?
You can listen, you just can't participate. And kind of the way they've been interpreting that is if you're muted and we can't see your face, that would be the equivalent of, you know, stepping down from the dais, should we be in person.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert.
Thank you.
Any, Commissioner Blanco, Commissioner Lopez, do we have any ex parte?
I do have an ex parte communication. Sorry, Commissioner Lopez. Yeah, I did have a meeting with Mr. Dan Blau as well, as well as with Hazel Davalos.
Mr. Chairman, Tom Lopez. I also had a meeting with Mr. Blau and a meeting with Ms. Davalos, and on the phone was Mr. Lucas Zucker.
Thank you very much. Okay, why don't we, Dana, why don't we go to the next person?
Okay, thank you. So next, we have Lucas Zucker.
Okay, Mr. Zucker?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Lucas Zucker. I'm a policy director at CAWS. I just have a suggestion around the continuance. You know, we really feel that this project is so massive in terms of its scale, you know, being probably the largest H2A project in, you know, labor camp in the state, and so deeply compatible with the industrial area where we're putting high-density residential in the middle of industrial zone, that, you know, I think this would be much more appropriate to be a discussion and part of the city's general plan process. We're going through a general plan process, getting a lot of public engagement on that. You know, and that's the appropriate time to think about, you know, is the zoning for Area Nine really meeting the needs of our community? You know, do we want this to be industrial? Do we want this to be residential? You know, I think kind of muddling through and saying, you know, let's do kind of some spot zoning for this, you know, massive residential project in the middle of industrial doesn't make sense, you know, when we've got ongoing a discussion where we can look at, you know, all of the zoning in the city, you know, and think about the community's needs in a much more deliberate and inclusive and, you know, kind of engaging way for the public.
Thank you very much.
So that would be my suggestion for you. Thank you.
Thank you. For the city attorney, if you feel like any of the speakers are starting to stray, I'm leaving it up to you to decide the fine line there and to step in because I know that it can pretty easily stray a little over the line one way or the other, and I would like your advice on that if you're starting to hear that that's the case as we continue down the list here.
Sure, I'd be happy to try and do that. To reiterate, for any other speakers that may be coming, what is before you is a consideration to continue this item. So not a discussion on the merits. I would say, though, like with the last speaker, he was suggesting an alternative forum for hearing an item like this, and I think that, you know, is arguably within a discussion of a continuance. So I think we're doing okay.
Great, thank you very much. Dana, let's have the next person.
Okay, next on the list, we have Jennifer Camacho.
Ms. Camacho.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Camacho. I'm here on behalf of Lideres Campesinas. And this year, despite the pandemic, we've been able to do outreach in the community, especially to farmworkers, and our most challenging obstacle is reaching our H2A workers because our company doesn't allow us to enter their workplace or even provide information. Employers, contractors, and companies, they don't want us to talk to our workers, although we are, but they don't want them to learn about their rights as farmworkers, which makes me sad because that could be my family or your family. H2A workers are also afraid to speak up because that could affect their chances of coming here next year. So now that many don't have access, we know, to their social security number or their visas, many are, they don't also have access to proper resources when they have accidents or they fall sick COVID. So we struggle to get them important information and foresee it only getting worse if thus development goes through. So just imagine allowing employers to have all farmworkers in one place. This is a form of indentured servitude, and even for some modern-day slavery. So we, as Lideres Campesinas, already know the hardship and isolation these workers face. So by doing this, we risk their freedom, and we're also making it harder for them to be close to shopping areas because they don't have cars like you and I. Even their errands, they have to do it by foot or with the company's van. And as we see this year, this pandemic has started up so much, and we should also be looking under consideration how viruses spread really quickly among people. So if we bring 3,000-plus workers in one small area, we know that could potentially affect or risk their physical and mental health. So I'll leave everyone with this question. Is it really necessary to have discussions on how to separate our essential workers from our community, or should we discuss ways to integrate them into our society? Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I guess I will do one more reminder. We are asking speakers on this item to address their thoughts on whether the item should be continued or not. We will have a subsequent public hearing where everyone will have an opportunity to address the pros and cons and all their concerns regarding this project in the future. So if speakers could please try and address their comments to whether they have any concerns regarding this item being continued and heard at a future date, that's what we're really looking for. Thank you.
Heather, can I also ask you, I mean, we're not able to comment on it, but can we make a general comment that hyperbole is not probably positive to the discussion? I mean, it's indentured servitude, slavery, I mean, for God's sakes. Is that something we can comment on? Or do we just take it?
Mr. Chair, I think we should let everybody speak and speak however they feel is most appropriate, as long as they could please direct it to whether this item should be continued or not. Thank you.
And Dana, are we able to start clearing names off of the, as they speak? Are we able to start clearing names off of the thing? My screen is starting to fill up with past speakers.
So I have been lowering the hands, so I am showing that we have essentially three left. Carlos Hernandez is on here four times.
Oh, I see, I see.
So I think it's the same person, but we can confirm that. So I believe that we have three left, and yes, so I'll go ahead and go to the next speaker, who is Donna Olivera. Donna, if you have any comments on the continuance, if you could please let us know. Thank you.
Ms. Olivera?
Hi, good evening, este, for community of Santa Maria specifically. I, my concern about continuation, well, just to add, right, is the fact that this, a lot of us here have shown up. I understand that the request for continuation is because of time to consider the written comments. However, there's some of us who are here present and would like to have that vocal, present, visible comment as well. So I just wanted to make the comment specifically addressing the economic impact of our community to, while I am fully in support in the other comments in regards to the isolation of the H2A workers, should they be moved elsewhere, or housing be created for them outside of this city bounds? I'm concerned specifically about that economic impact on Santa Maria, specifically along Broadway and Main Street. As we've seen, a lot of H2A housing is within city bounds or majority, right, which allows for traffic to be increased along Broadway and Main Street. Excuse me, there's a paletero on my street. Specifically, you know, during the pandemic, we have seen that other communities have had large impacts on the loss of business that have resulted in restaurant closures and small business closures. However, here in Santa Maria, we have not seen as much visible impact along Main Street and Broadway. And part of it is the contribution of these H2A workers who do walk along Broadway and Main Street to do their local shopping, their daily dinner buying and buying other needs and not being dependent on what they have.
Ms. Olivera, once again, it's about continuing it, not the merits of where the housing is. So if you could focus on that.
But I think the continuance should also include maybe a study on the economic impact that would occur in our community. I'm sure there's data on the past few years in the growth of our local economy since the emergence of these H2A workers, increased population here in our community. And that's basically what I want to raise as well, if there's going to be, if the city staff is going to be concerned about or looking into concerns, I think in the continuation, we should also have some type of reporting from the city, data gathering about the economic impact of moving a large population that does have some economic power here in our community and impact.
Chair, that's three minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
But yeah, that's what I would like to bring to the table in my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Olivera. That's your three minutes. Thank you very much. Dana, can we go ahead and move to the next person?
Yes, thank you. So Carlos Hernandez? Yes, thank you. So Carlos Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez? Uh, you are still muted, Mr. Hernandez.
I may need to try some of the other, um, because he's on here a few times. So let me try this one. Mr. Hernandez, you should be able to speak now.
He asked to unmute.
Okay, so Mr. Hernandez, uh, you should be able to un, oh.
Hi, I'm Sulema on behalf of CAUS. I actually have four farm workers here. Sol Reyes, Sofia Garcia, Luz Ramirez and Carlos Hernandez. They spent two, um, they took two afternoons out of their day to come here and speak to you on the Donati project. And I would like to ask you to, um, be able to hear them out, um, because.
If, if the, uh, um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Who, who is this?
Uh, this is Sulema from CAUS and I am.
Okay, and if you, if, if they, if they wish to speak, uh, Mr. Hernandez wishes to speak on specifically on this topic of, uh, of, uh, continuing the, uh, the, uh, thing, then the, uh, item, then he can do so, but not on the merits of the project or the merits of, of continuing. So if, if, if it's specific to the continuing, then he can, he can make his comments.
And my point was that, um, you said that there was four Carlos Hernandez. Um, they're actually all farm workers with different names. So I would like for all of them to have the opportunity to speak on this. They will be doing their comment in Spanish and I will be translating, um, in English and they've reduced it to, uh, 60 seconds. So, empieza.
Hola, buenas tardes. Nombre, Carlos. Uh, soy parte de la comunidad de Santa Maria. Uh, la razón que estoy aquí para hablar sobre, sobre un proyecto. El proyecto que está a, a un, a una distancia de la ciudad de Santa Maria. La comunidad de Santa Maria, toda esa gente que. Estamos, estamos bien, bien, o estamos preocupados por los, por los contratados, los campesinos que vienen, que están para, lo quieren aislar. Son más de cuatro mil trabajadores. Un proyecto que no, que no queremos que sea votado, que no voten a ese. Porque, porque la comunidad. La comunidad de Santa Maria, queremos, queremos conocer esas personas también. Somos, somos parte de la, de la comunidad. Y si ellos vienen a trabajar acá, a ganar el sustento de, el sustento de la vida, para conocer más personas. También ellos también tienen antojito, quieren llegar a la ciudad, comprar algo, comprar comida para ellos. Y, y merecen, merecen como servicios hospitales, uh, que, que haya más cerquita como sala de emergencia o servicios legales, o también a veces hay abuso de los trabajadores. Ni, ni pueden comprar un antojito si están algo retirado de la ciudad. Es por eso somos comunidad segura, queremos una comunidad segura. Y ellos también están para conocer la comunidad, conocer leyes que lo proteja a este país. Gracias.
Um, hello, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Carlos. I'm a farm worker and member of the community in Santa Maria. Um, I am making this public comment because I ask you to vote no on the Donati project since it's a project that will isolate H2A workers from the community and their miserable.
Once again, once again, if you would, if you would please, um, um, talk about the, uh, about moving the, uh, continuing the item, um, and not the merits of the item. So if there is additional things in there, uh, please edit those out and just, just get to the continuation portion.
Though I agree that we should not take homes from local farm workers, it is good that they, um, that H2A workers are not isolated from the community and put in areas where there's chemicals and they're.
Well, once, 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 once again, I'm going to ask you to just keep it to the continuation per what staff attorney has asked us to do. So please, if there, if there are things in what, what this gentleman has said that reference those, then please stick to that, but don't just start moving on to another, uh, another, um, discussion point about merits of the, the project. Otherwise, we will move on to the next person.
Okay, um, then I think you should move on to the next person, but I do want to make it clear that four farm workers are here, asking you to not vote for this project, and we will be at the next meeting.
We're not voting, we're not voting for this project.
We are going to be sharing why we, uh, do not agree with it. Thank you.
Dana, who is the final, I see, I miss, I see Ms. Chang has her hand up still. Is that, is she asking to speak again?
Yeah, it looks, yeah, she raised her hand again.
Well, she, she has had her, her three minutes, so, um, is there anybody else?
Chairman, I want to say that, that.
That Ms. Ms. Chang, you, you, Ms. Ms. Chang, Ms. Chang, you've had, you've had your three minutes, as has everybody else, so.
This is towards, this is towards the continuance, which is, uh.
That's, that's fine, but Ms. Chang, you have had, you, you have had your three minutes. And so we were going to move on to, to, to the next agenda item, I believe. Unless there's, is there another, Dana, is there another, uh, person other than Ms. Chang?
No, and Ms. Chang, I'm, uh, I'm going to have to mute you since you've already had your three minutes.
Thank you.
Um, so we do not have any other hands raised.
I believe Sulema said that there was three, uh, people, uh, with her wanting to make comments.
So she mentioned that we should go ahead and move on to the next person, so we went ahead and did that. Um, so I think as far as I see here, we don't have any other hands raised. Um, so then we would just move on now to your commission making a motion and moving forward with the, uh, continuance.
Okay. Can I get a motion to, um, continue this item? Or not, I guess, continue, continue or, um, or drop the item, I guess. Which, which motion?
It would be to continue the item indefinitely, so it would be off calendar.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue the, uh, item indefinitely off calendar?
I, I move that we, uh, continue the item to, uh, date uncertain, off calendar.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that much.
Okay, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to the, um, well, before we move on to the consent calendar, I will say the following is the online procedure for the agenda. I will introduce the agenda item and turn it over to staff for a presentation. Once the staff's presentation is completed, I will open the agenda item to the commissioners to ask any questions of staff. Uh, first asking commissioners of any, uh, disclosure of communication to themselves and the applicants. Um, after all the questions by the commissioners are answered, I will open up the agenda item to the applicant, who will be on as an attendee. Uh, applicant, please raise your hand at that time and the host will unmute you to make any comments, uh, on your item. After the applicant's presentation, I will then ask if any commissioners have any questions of the applicant. Once the commission has asked questions of the applicant, I will then open the item to the public for general comment. For the public in attendance, please wait to raise your hand until after I have called the public comment on the item and the host will unmute you in the order received. Please remember, if you're dialing in, to use the star nine keys to raise your hand and you will have up to three minutes or else otherwise directed by the chair. Um, after the public comment, I will bring the item to the commissioners for any additional comments or questions, uh, to the applicant or staff. Um, in addition, uh, do we, uh, okay, I see that, uh, Commissioner Hernandez and is Commissioner Seifer coming back? There we go. So we have moved on to, uh, item, uh, excuse me, to the consent calendar. Um, let's see, the, uh, consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commission members. Should anyone, including members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. Uh, we have a single item on the consent calendar. Does any, um, does anyone wish to, um, to pull that item? Uh, Commissioner Seifer?
Uh, some things happened in my screen here, Chair, but, uh, yes, on the consent calendar, can you hear me?
I can.
Uh, I, I need to recuse myself from the, uh, the consent calendar. I actually have a, I, I bid on that project. I don't feel comfortable, uh, voting on it.
Thank you very much.
On the, the smooth.
Right. Any other, um, anybody else wish to, uh, remove themselves from the vote? Okay, if not, then, uh, I need a motion regarding the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Hernandez has moved. Do we have a second?
Second, Chairman.
Commissioner Blanco has seconded. Um, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Uh, let's see here. I just drew a blank. I'm not doing Seifer, right? Commissioner Lopez?
Right. Aye.
And Chair Dickerson. I'm so sorry.
Okay, so we move on to the public hearing and, uh, let's go ahead and hear from staff. This is on item number two, the continued item Centennial Square Apartments Plan Development Permit at the southwest corner of Miller Street and Plaza Drive.
Commissioner Dickerson, just, uh, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to let you know, I, I do have a conflict of interest, uh, financial conflict of interest on this item, and so I'll have to recuse myself and, uh, I probably will not be returning, so, um, with that, I will, it's hard to say goodnight.
Have a, have a pleasant evening, Commissioner Blanco. Commissioner Seifer?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, you have your hand raised.
That was for the, uh, consent, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Uh, Commissioner, um, Hernandez?
I want to also announce that I have a conflict of interest and I will be recusing myself. Um, I believe that this is the last items, so I don't need to return or I can return when Ms. Edie informs me I can return.
No, I think you can have the rest of the evening. Uh, I think that's fine. All, all that's left is the oral reports and, and your own thing. So, yeah, if you would like to leave, then I understand entirely.
Good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Okay. Um, just to, uh, one last thing, I, I just want to ask if the, any of the commissioners have had any ex parte communication with the, uh, with the applicant regarding this agenda?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not either.
Okay, let's move forward. Staff, Carol, you've been very patient.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Carol Zizinhenny and I will be presenting the project for Centennial Square. This is a request to, uh, construct 184 unit apartment complex. The project site, oh, let me go ahead and move, move my screen forward here. So this project site is located at the corner of Plaza Drive and Miller Street and just to the west of the old Marion, um, Hospital, it's now, um, Marion Medical Plaza. Um, across the street is, uh, Miller Center Mixed Use, as well as San Joaquin Valley College, which is across the street to the north. Vandenberg Senior Residences are off to the northwest and then, um, Casia Apartments to the south, as well as Driftwood Gardens subdivision. Uh, surrounding the, the project are residential uses to the south and southeast with, with those apartments and single family homes I mentioned. Medical offices and professional offices are to the north and east of the project. Uh, residential uses are, this is actually, uh, legal nonconforming. This was previously a motel for the, uh, Vandenberg Senior Residences. Um, and then commercial, a commercial shopping center is to the west. This is a, uh, view of the project site. You can see here, these arrows depict the, the individual pictures that are shown on the screen. So the, the vantage point, A, would be looking south along, um, Miller Street towards, um, towards the apartments. Across the street, you can see the, um, Miller, Miller Complex, uh, mixed use project um, for Cups and Crumbs. Off to, on number B, it's looking down Plaza Drive to the west. Uh, the shopping center is in the, in the background with the offices off to the right here. And then looking, um, on letter C is looking onto the project site itself. As you can see, the project site is, is relatively devoid of any landscaping and is, is currently vacant. So in 2013, a project was approved for 138 apartment units, as shown on the screen here. This was, um, part of PD 2020, 2012 dash zero 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 three, has the same name as the current project before you this evening. Uh, several grading permits were submitted, but the project was never constructed. The permit has received its final time extension in 2020 due to the financial difficulties during the COVID-19 pandemic. This permit expires this month in August. Uh, please notice that the site layout, and I'll go ahead and highlight my pointer to better show the project site. This is, the buildings are located, uh, primarily along the street frontages with one entrance on Plaza Drive and, and the rest of the, uh, buildings clustered around the center with, with neighborhood and, and, uh, complex amenities in, in the very center. There is one emergency exit, um, for, for emergency vehicles aligned with Barcellus. And so we'll, without further ado, we'll go, go ahead to the, um, proposed project before you this evening. So this is a project for 184 affordable units with, with a clubhouse and playground. Um, access is off Plaza Drive, as I'd mentioned with the previous project, so there are some similarities. The, the general layout is, is very similar with access that aligns. You can't see it on the slide, but it does align with Barcellus Avenue. And this entry aligns with the apartment complex to the north. This project, um, is also proposing to reconfigure Plaza Drive with diagonal parking along the street. Um, we did receive, uh, a letter from a concerned, uh, neighbor of the Drift, uh, across the street on, um, in Driftwood Gardens. They mentioned some concern about, uh, parking and so the applicant, um, has proposed to provide, um, some additional parking on the street, diagonal parking, um, to, to address any parking concerns. The, there are eight buildings proposed and they are a mix of one, two and three bedroom units. Um, going back to parking, 305 onsite parking spaces are provided, which is, which does exceed the requirement for parking for this project. And, uh, additional 50 diagonal spaces are provided on Plaza Drive. Solar carports are also provided, um, and proposed, 90, which covers about 90 spaces. Um, and then two retention basins are proposed on the site, which are, are multi-use. So they, they are green space as well as, um, for stormwater retention during heavy rains or rainfall. Playgrounds are proposed and I'll get into that in a, in a, on future slides. And just to point out that this is the proposed design for the car, solar carport canopies. So this is a density bonus request. This project is 100% affordable. Um, state law allows a density bonus of, of up to 80%. Um, for 100% affordable projects, this project proposes a density, uh, to provide 184 units, which is a density bonus of 33% or 46 additional units that would, that, um, goes above the 22 units per acre allowed by the general plan. Uh, as you can see below, uh, a majority of the units are proposed for low income residents and, uh, about 20% is divided equally between very low and extremely low, uh, income households. Off to the right, just to give you an idea of, uh, what that would be, what, what income limits that, that allows. Um, it's showing 30, 50 and 60%, um, 60% being low, 30% being, um, extremely low area median income. So that's based on Santa Barbara County, uh, figures on here. And two units are provided for onsite managers. So as also part of the density bonus project, uh, the state law allows for concessions. This project qualifies for four concessions, which are, they are concessions which basically allows for reductions or, um, waivers of, of city zoning and development standards. The applicant is requesting. The applicant is requesting two. One is for setback encroachments. You can see in the, uh, rather dark shaded areas of the buildings. Those are encroachments into the setbacks, um, at a total area of seventeen, uh, seventeen hundred thirty-three square feet. It's about less, a little less than ten percent, uh, encroachment into those required yards. And then, the second concession is a reduction in open space requirements. So, city, city code, zoning code requires, uh, tw- two hundred and fifty square feet per unit, which amounts to approximately, uh, or exactly forty-six thousand square feet. The applicant is providing, um, open space with, with barbecue pits and picnic tables, as well as balconies and patios for outdoor private use and as well, and shared, shared use, um, in the green spaces and playgrounds. Um, a little bit of vehicular circulation. Uh, the, as I'd mentioned previously, the project is getting sole access from Plaza Drive. There is an emergency crash gate on East Barcellus Avenue. However, it's not going to be open to the public or for daily vehicle use by residents. Um, in, in an effort to address parking and, and, uh, circulation concerns, there are conditions incorporated into the permit to require striping on Plaza Drive to Miller Street for left and right-hand turns out of the project, so north onto Miller Street or south onto Miller Street as well. So, there would be two lanes, one for each direction of traffic. And as I'd mentioned before, angled parking is being proposed by the project. This is a view of the corner of, at, um, Plaza Drive and Miller Street. This is just showing a perspective of the proposed development. I believe the applicant does have an updated slide to show you as well. Um, this is a view of the, most of, of what most of the units will look like. This is building type one. As you can see, accent trim and tile and this, uh, ocean blue color is proposed, as well as wrought iron railings throughout the project's S-tile roof for, uh, Mediterranean, Spanish-style architecture. And here, these, these arches is also characteristic of that style. Uh, la- laundry units, or laundry facilities, excuse me, are proposed, um, out of view of, of the street. It's, they're proposed in, um, screened closets on, on the balcony and/or patio. So, this is a view of building type two. This is the only one of its kind. It, it provides the clubhouse for, um, resident amenities. The applicant will have more information as, with that as well. That was, um, discussed in study session. Um, this is some of the decorative lighting proposed, which is, um, there is an accent and further, um, detail for the, for the project. Here is a view of the site lighting. I've highlighted in red the pathway bollard lights, which are, um, more at pedestrian scale. They're, they're pointed towards the ground. They're usually around hip level. And then, in blue, with these blue dots, are parking lot lighting standards. Um, the, the final design of the lighting will be reviewed by city staff with a photometric plan. So, this is just conceptual at this point, but this can kind of show what, what the applicant is proposing with, with, in regards to landscaping and safety, or, excuse me, lighting and safety. Here's a view of the outdoor amen- amenities and, uh, tree, tree planting plan. So, here's some examples of the, the materials proposed with, with pet stations, barbecues, picnic tables, benches, bicycle parking, and then, um, two different types of playgrounds for, uh, age-appropriate play for kids. And then, um, examples of the, uh, wrought iron fencing that's proposed around the, the basins and, um, in certain areas around the, the site. Here's a conceptual planting plan. Um, I, most of the, so I'll just go back. There are different varieties of, of trees proposed on the site. Um, there's quite a few large trees and then a few sm- uh, smaller accent, uh, ornamental trees, as well as some other, um, screening-type trees. Um, they, they aren't called out here on this plan, but, um, this, this, uh, conceptual planting palette, um, gives a little bit of an example. Some of these, uh, sawleaf zelkovas and, and brisbane boxes are the larger ones, and then you can kind of see with the flowering, um, smaller trees off to the side. Shrubs are proposed throughout. On the retention basins, uh, turf is proposed for, for play and, and sports and things like that. So, with that, um, staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions. By resolution, approve an addendum to the negative, mitigated negative declaration, MND, prepared for the Centennial Square project. And second by motion, approve plan development permit, PD twenty twenty dash zero 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 nine for Centennial Square apar- uh, apartments. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant also has, um, a slide, uh, a presentation and a slide available to discuss, um, with, with their transportation planner, um, their transportation engineer. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. Um, do the commissioners have any questions of staff at this time? Uh, Commissioner Seifer?
Uh, Carol, thank you, uh, for that presentation. Uh, I, I didn't see, but I believe that the, there's still a, uh, exit that, uh, goes on Miller from the project that, uh, that is, uh, because of the traffic study, uh, they're, they're gonna be turning, uh, north and south from the project onto Miller. Is that correct?
So, there is a, there is access from Plaza Drive onto, onto Miller, correct? Um, I, if, if I understood you correctly, Commissioner Seifer, the, there is a crash gate from the project directly onto Miller. So, it's, it's only for emergency vehicles.
The last time, I think, we talked about this, there was an exit. So, that's been removed now?
There was always an emergency, uh, crash gate or emerg- emergency entrance. Um, I apologize for any confusion if that was the case.
It might help, um, I'm sorry, this is Dana Edie. It might help, Carol, if you bring up the site plan and point out what you're referring to.
Still looks like there's a, uh, an en- exit on Miller, me. Right there. Yeah.
So, uh, let me, um, I don't have the, let me just check to see if I have a slide. Um, there is a gate proposed there and it doesn't show on very well.
Carol, we can't hear you.
I do apologize. Uh, there is a, I guess you can see my screen.
We can.
Oh, you can, okay. The, the grading plan, I did not, um, get a chance to upload it. Does, does show, um, maybe you can see it a little bit here. There's some fencing proposed and a, and a gate along here.
Okay. Well, great. That's, uh, that, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez, you have, uh, any questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, th- thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question with respect to, uh, the staff report that talks about the accident data at Plaza, at the seven broadside collisions in five years. Uh, I just, my question is, was that actually a Plaza Miller or Miller and Stoll?
I believe it was from, uh, Plaza, Plaza and Miller. And, and Engineer Bayes may correct me if I'm wrong, but he, he's nodding his head yes that it was from Plaza and Miller.
Do we have any data at, uh, Miller and Stoll?
The accident data, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lopez, the question that you're asking is, where, where is the accident data derived from?
Right, and, and I think that was answered at Plaza and Miller.
Correct.
But my, my other question was, i- is there data of Miller and Stoll?
We, we can't obtain data, but the information that was, was, the data that was, um, obtained was for, with the, with the closest proximity to the, to the subject of development.
Okay. And, and it mentions that it's not considered a safety concern. What, what is the threshold for a concern of safety or, or accidents at an intersection?
Generally, you have five in the course of a year.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez, and I have nothing at this time. Um, do we open it up to the public? And is there any public, I, I can't see on the screen if there's any public, uh, comments at this time about this project.
So, we do have the applicant here who has a presentation for you, um.
Oh, let's do that first.
Yes, so let me go to them. Um, I see Ryan Schwartz here, so I'll go ahead and allow Ryan to speak.
Good evening, Chair Dickerson, members of the planning commission. Uh, Brian Schwartz of Planning Concepts. Can you hear me okay? Yep.
We're just getting the presentation up, Brian. Just one moment. Carol's bringing that up for you.
While, while you're doing that, um, I'll just take this opportunity to introduce the applicant, our, our project team that, um, is attending tonight, uh, remotely. Tim Fletch with Dawson's Holdings, Tyson and Dwayne Davis of Blue Rock Development are the project applicants. We also have Russ Garrison with Beth- Bethel Engineering, Darren Cabral with RRM, who's the project architect, and Kevin Small with Plain Air Designs for, is the landscape architect. Um, as Carol mentioned, we've got Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers here. And he's gonna be presenting the majority of our slides this evening as the main concerns that we heard at the study session were surrounding traffic. Scott, um, prepared the, uh, environment, the traffic study back in two thousand thirteen and also the updated report, uh, for this project as well. So, he, he's here with us as, um, also tonight. So, we can move to the next slide. Uh, again, I think you've covered the Vicendi map. You understand, uh, the location, the surrounding uses. Um, this is a, uh, a great project for high-density, um, uh, high-density apartments. It's right next to shopping, commercial services, and public transportation. There's bus stops within a half a mile, or, excuse me, a half a block. Um, it's surrounded by the commercial office and high-density residential land uses. There's medical nearby. Um, Hancock College is relatively close by. So, this is a, a very good location for this type of project. Next slide, please. Carol did a really good job overall with her presentation, but also going, uh, through the differences between the currently approved plan and the, uh, the proposed plan. Um, you can see, again, it's main access off of Plaza Drive. Two buildings, uh, fronting Plaza Drive, and then two buildings fronting Miller Street. Uh, three buildings surrounding the courtyard on the approved plan, and then in the proposed plan. Next slide, please. It essentially just adds one more, uh, building in the, in the center on the lower right. So, the, the site design, the main access, the drive aisles, the emergency access, um, which lines up with Barcellus Street, fronting onto Miller Street, emergency access, that's all remained the same. Next slide, please. And this is a slide of the, the architecture. Again, three-story walk-up, Spanish-style, um, is what was previously approv- approved. And this project has really tried to stay with the consistency of, in really all a- aspects, um, of, of that originally approved project. Next slide, please. And the, these are the, the current elevations with the Spanish-style and, um, you'll see it's, it's very comparable in terms of style, height, excuse me, bulk, scale, materials. Next line, please. So, again, during the July eighth day sessions, several questions and comments about traffic circulation. These are summarized as, um, you know, review, please review the distance from the project driveway to Miller Street and analyze for potential conflicts. Um, there was essentially a concern the driveway was located potentially too close to Miller Street. Evaluate the project driveway in relationship to driveways across the street. Make sure that there's no turning conflicts with, uh, the, the businesses across the street on Plaza Drive. Review Miller Street Plaza Drive accident history, that's already been discussed. Analyze site distances on Miller Street, um, for those vehicles turning out from Plaza Drive onto Miller Street. And then, finally, uh, explain ITE or Institute of Transportation Engineer trip generation rates for affordable housing. There was a, a question, uh, along the lines of, well, how can there be more units but less trips? So, Scott has done the analysis in coordination with the city. I'll turn it over to him to go through, uh, those slides. And then, we'll bring it back, uh, to me to close out the presentation. And then, Dana, if you could, uh, hand it over to Scott, please.
Thank you. I just got unmuted, so now I can speak. Thanks. Thanks, Brian.
Perfect.
Again, my name is Scott Shell with Associated Transportation Engineers. As Brian said, uh, I did some follow-up work after the study session, looking at some of the issues that were raised, the questions that were raised. So, uh, first, onto the distance from Miller Street to the driveway for the project. It's, it's about two hundred and fifty feet, and it was positioned to align with the entrance driveway for the offices across the street, which is, which is kind of what we want in a, in a traffic planning world. So, um, the distance is, uh, if you go to the next slide, Carol, or Dana? So, we've got two hundred and fifty feet from Miller to the driveway. It's aligned with the offices across the street. This provides adequate spacing between the Miller Street intersection and the project driveway. We don't anticipate any queues stacking up that far that would inhibit access. And, uh, the alignment with the driveway across the street provides, uh, adequate spacing and site distance for people turning in and out of those two driveways. Uh, we looked at the volumes on Plaza Drive and essentially that, you know, we're forecasting that that intersection and that driveway is gonna operate a level service A, which is, you know, fairly low delays, uh, not a lot of congestion. So, um, during the peak hour periods, we, we felt that it was an adequate spacing and, and good operations. Go to the next slide. Oh, and also no, uh, there was no site distance restrictions out there, nothing in the way to, you know, giving nobody's way to see, uh, cars on the road. There was some discussion, we just heard about accident analysis. So, the city staff provided us with accident data from July fifteenth, excuse me, um, twenty fifteen all the way through July twenty twenty-one. So, it's actually a six-and-a-half-year period. Uh, there were seven accidents reported, and one of the first things we do to analyze accidents is, is look at the accident rate and compare that to statewide averages. Uh, we heard Mr. Bayes also talk about, you know, when does it become a big issue? When he said five a year? Uh, that's the level where you might consider putting a signal in. So, that's another, uh, important variable in looking at these things. Uh, but we basically have it about one a year. Uh, most were broadsides. There was no, um, fatalities or major injuries reported. So, in looking at the accident rate, it was point one eight accidents per million entering vehicles. That's how we calculate the rate, how much traffic's on the road, uh, and how much, um, what, what the rate is per, per million entering vehicles at the intersection. The statewide rate reported by Caltrans for that type of intersection is point one seven accidents per million entering vehicles. So, we're right about at the average. Uh, there's another test that Caltrans does, which is to look at, um, the significance test. And running those numbers, in order to, to have a sort of significant number, would be fourteen accidents within that seven, six-and-a-half-year period. So, we did the test and essentially showed that it wasn't a significant issue. So, it basically says we don't have to do a lot of further evaluation. We go to the next slide. There was a question about site distance. It's a little hard to read this one, so we went out and, uh, measured the site distance for a car sitting at the approach at Plaza Drive, looking both north and south on Miller Street to see if there was adequate site distance to anticipate cars coming and to make left and right turns. Next slide. So, the site distance for that road and that speed, the minimum required from Caltrans is three hundred and eighty-five feet. So, we saw on that last slide, looking to the north, we had four hundred and fifty feet and beyond the signal at Stoll. And looking to the south, we had nine hundred feet. So, the site distance at the intersection, uh, more than exceeds the Caltrans minimums. Slide. We had heard about the angled parking and the additional lanes that were gonna be implemented at the Plaza Drive Stoll, excuse me, Plaza Drive, Miller Street intersection. Uh, this is a, a diagram that the site design team pulled up. We could see the angled parking on the south side. I think we heard the staff report that's gonna provide fifty additional spaces on that side. And you can see the additional lanes that are provided, uh, at Plaza Drive and Miller. That's going to, um, basically reduce delays and increase the capacity at that approach, you know, further to making operations better in the future. That had, that actually come from the original, uh, two thousand and twelve study that we had done. Uh, next slide. Next slide. So there was a question about the, the new information that's out, the, as Brian had mentioned, the Institute of Transportation Engineers publishes information about how much traffic is generated by certain types of development. There's also some new information coming out of the CECL legislation for vehicle miles traveled that is encouraging affordable housing. We're seeing that affordable infill developments are generating less traffic than standard apartment units, and so we had gone through an analysis that looked at the reduction in traffic that could be generated because of the affordable nature and the higher density based on the new information in both ITE and the CECL documents. I think we have one more table to look at as we, if we go to the next slide. So as we ran through the analysis, we looked at the approved project and what the old rates would say for the 138 units that were approved back in 2012, whatever it was. With the new information that's available, we see a, a reduction in traffic because of the affordable nature and the higher density that, again, is coming from the, the ITE trip generation report, as well as the new CECL information for VMT from the OPR. So that, I'm going to kick it back to Brian, and we'll be here for any questions that the
Thank you, Scott. So just to kind of wrap up here, in summary, this project is consistent with the golden objectives of the general plan, and it complies with all facets of the state density bonus There, there are no new environmental impacts as a result of the increased 46 units. There's no new traffic impacts, as discussed by Mr. Shell. In fact, as he's stated and shown in, in the report, the project's actually estimated to have reduced vehicular trips. This is an infill project that is in a good location for this type of, you know, high-density housing. Again, close to shopping, close to commercial uses, close to pub, public transportation. It's, the project's consistent with currently, with the currently approved project. Again, it was really modeled around making as few changes as possible, but it will be available to workforce individuals and families within the community that struggle to afford market-rate housing. So we've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and we agree with them. We would like to thank staff for all their hard work on this project, and that concludes our presentation, but we would like to reserve time for any final comments or rebuttals before closing the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you to your team. I see that Commissioner Lopez has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for Mr., or for Scott, with respect to the, the slide that was shown, 0.17 average, what is it, per million accidents for Caltrans, and we're at 0.18. How, how do you anticipate the addition of 130, well, when it was originally looked at, it was 138 units? How does, how does that get thrown into those numbers?
This is Scott Shell, can you guys hear me? I'm off mute, yeah. So the, the way that we look at the accident data is to see whether or not the existing conditions and volumes have a, have a history and a pattern that needs to be corrected. Certainly, there's going to be some additional traffic at the, at the intersection with the additional units, but the, the history doesn't suggest that that's going to increase the accident rate.
So the, the factoring in of going back to the last project, 138 long units, is it, is, it's, it's not a, a number that you could, well, like you said, the, the traffic isn't there, that, which would be able to either contribute or not contribute to the accident per million of entering vehicles. Is there anything that, that gets thrown into these numbers here, even as an assumption, to, to see where that future threshold might lie? Or future rate might lie?
No, the, the basic accident history analysis is looking backwards, and so it says, do we have a problem now? And we look at the, the volumes that have been experienced at the intersection over the last 6.5-year period, and we had some counts that we had from back in 2012, and we had some newer counts that we got from the Acquista Pache Specific Plan EIR that was done, so we were able to get a, a more current database for the increase in traffic that has occurred at the intersection. So it, it does capture the current situation all the way up to 2019, but it doesn't forecast it in the future. It essentially looks at the historical volumes and accident potential, and says, is, is this place a problem or not? And so really, that's how, how we look at the, at the accident rates in this.
You're muted, Chair Dickerson.
Thank you. Commissioner Seifert.
Thank you, Chair. Brian Schwartz, you on there?
Yes, Commissioner Seifert.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. You know, I'm, I'm just looking at these elevations that are on the Miller and Plaza, and you're, you're calling it a Spanish-style building, it's, it seems like it's lacking a lot of features. Is there anything we can do to make it a little more attractive? The landscaping, the big trees look good, I mean, it looks like they've, they've, they've done a good mix of, of trying to get some greenery in there, some, some large trees, some small trees. But I noticed the color board, we're, we're looking at an accent and trim and a stucco exactly the same mahogany color, a crystal white. There's not a lot of, the, the window treatment, they've got, they've got some windows with some, 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 like a lint, not a lintel's over, but some stools underneath them, and some that aren't, they're just plain windows. Is there, is there some way to maybe do something with the colors, or enhance it a little way? You know, you've, you've got that teal color, but that's only in those arch areas. The rest is going to be pretty plain. Is there, is there a way to maybe dress that up for us a little bit?
Yeah, Commissioner Seifert, we, we really try to address all the comments that we've heard in the study session, and even be, try to forecast comments that the commission might have. We try to be proactive in that, and as such, we have actually prepared optional enhanced exhibit for particularly what we anticipated were the concerns at the most visual portion of the project, which would be the corner of Plaza and Miller Street.
Exactly.
And so dressing up, enhancing the, the sides particularly of those buildings, the corners there, we thought that would be the best enhancement and use of funds for this affordable project. It's, it's a little bit hard to see, but we have added some decorative ironwork over recessed tile accents on the sides.
Yes.
As well as adding some fabric awnings at the larger windows on those, on those side, on those bedrooms. And these would be particular to the, the corner of Miller and Plaza where we felt would be most visible. You can also see with the landscaping, we did two, one with the trees, one without, just to kind of show a little bit more of, that, that enhancement's better, but obviously it'll be richly landscaped at that corner as well, which will, which will kind of add to the overall architecture concept.
Well, and we know that depending on the, the size of the tree and the length it takes to grow, that, that, that building will probably be fairly visible for quite a while. I know some of the trees are bigger, but they, they do take a while to actually grow to, to the, to the heights that you're showing in that rendering there. So I, I appreciate that. I would, I would, it would be very nice to, to dress that up and make a little more presentable on those two streets, on that corner. That would, I would, I would prefer that myself.
If that's acceptable to the commission, we can certainly have staff add, add those to the conditions of approval to, at, at building permit submittal for, for those enhancements.
And, and Brian, I would, I would just, you know, I'm obviously not an artist, but the white trim and the white stucco, utilizing those two colors, it seems like that very bright white, that, that crystal white, I, I think that's a very high white on the trim. I'm not sure that's, you know, just in my opinion, it just seems a little bright for me. I, I would rather see a different accent color on that than rather than using the, the main body of the stucco and the, and also the trim as the same colors. I think if you did that, along with those additions you're talking about, that, that, that might spruce this thing up a little bit, and just make it a little bit more attractive, if you guys could consider that.
Yeah, certainly, we would work with staff on, on a color that would be most representative to, of the, of the architectural style, but also a, a bit of a contrast as well.
That'd be great, thank you. And one, one other comment, we, we, staff did talk about the letter from Vanessa Escobar, talking about parking issues. I think that the parking, although you're meeting state requirements, very, very needed in that area, just because of, it seems like we're overparked as it is with the other areas. She's, she's saying that people are crossing Miller and parking in their Driftwood Gardens, or Driftwood Meadows, whatever it is, the subdivision right there, and creating some issues for the, for the residents. So I do appreciate any efforts made towards bringing up the parking, because even though you've brought up 305 and 50, that's 355 spaces, normally the city would require 368, so we're still short, about 18 spaces, according to the city, not the state, I understand that. So anything we could do to squeeze more parking in there, I understand that traffic studies show that the affordable housing has less of a need, but we do seem to be severely underparked in that area, and getting some street parking on there and, and giving some relief for the neighbors would, I'm, I'm sure that would be greatly appreciated. And, and I, I thank you for adding those spaces, and if you could squeeze it anymore, I would highly recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Anything else, Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, ju, just real quickly, I know Commissioner Seifert touched on the color material board, just to make everything the same, I was looking at sheet A15, and the, the call-outs are a little off. I know that's maybe kind of a, a minor thing, but just to keep it consistent with A14, sheet A14, you might want to point those in the, at the correct elements.
Thank you very much. Brian, the, the, the additions that you're going to put onto the, on, on the corner here, that was pictured, would we be able to put that on, on at least the, the other two, at least the other two exterior corners as well, just to, to have continuity? I mean, we are going to be seeing this from, from multiple angles. I, I'm not, I'm not so much worried about it as far as the, the interior corner, the one on the southwest corner, but, but I, I do like these, these additions that you've put, and I was wondering if we could put those same additions to the other two corners on the southeast and northwest corners.
So just to be clear, it would be buildings one through four, it would be both the buildings on Plaza, both the buildings on fronting Miller?
I believe so, I'd need to take a look at the... Yeah. Right, right.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that, you know, I, I'm going to let the applicant chime in if that is not acceptable, but I think that having the consistency certainly of the awnings and, you know, the, the little side decorative features on the buildings, just for those buildings fronting the public street and view would be acceptable. If, 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 I'm getting myself in trouble and the applicant is going to, has an objection, please, please speak up to that, but I understand your point of wanting a consistent theme, not having, you know, the, just the corner buildings looking different than the other two.
I, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think if you did that and you coupled it with the, with the, the trim colors that Commissioner Seifert was discussing, and, and the comments that Commissioner Lopez made, I, I think that that would see an improvement on, on, on this particular project, and I think it looks good. But do you have anything else for us, or should we, should we hear what the public has to say if there's any comment?
If there, if there is any comment, yeah, if I could reserve just a, a minute to have any, any responses, but other than that, I think we're, we've concluded.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Dana, do we have, I see a, a hand up on Dana. I think you lay down to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Dickerson, commissioners. So I just wanted to mention, you were discussing just now some changes to the project that you'd like to see, and I just wanted to mention that when you get to the point of making a motion, if you could please include that as part of your motion, if that's what you'd like to do, then, you know, we'll make sure to track that as part of the record for the, the project.
And that would be, and that would be, as you said, the motion. You, you would include that in the motion, not the, not the resolution, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The motion would include the changes to the architecture that were discussed at the, during deliberations today, or during discussion today.
Okay. I see one attendee with a, a hand up, it's Ms. Olivera. Is, is that the hand up from the previous agenda item, or is she wanting to talk on this agenda?
No, I, I believe she would like to speak on this item, so I'll go ahead and unmute her.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from, from Ms. Olivera. Ms. Olivera, you have three minutes.
Hi, I actually just had two questions.
Sure.
I couldn't really formulate the questions, but I wasn't able to find the slide about open space regarding, I think that, if I saw the chart correctly, it was, there was a reduction in, from what is proposed to what is required, and I wanted just to get a little bit more clarification on that, whether or not that's an issue for the commission. I, I see it as an issue as a community member and just the healthiness of the, the community in general. My other point ha, was having to do with labor, specifically, is the, I know in certain parts of California, such as San Francisco and Oakland, there have been moved towards, when it comes to development, to require a, a certain percentage of, of the construction and the development being made by local community members. So I was wondering if that's something that the commission is interested in introducing in this project, or in general, in terms of ma, making sure that some, a percentage or there is local labor that is participating in this, and that isn't necessarily all labor coming from elsewhere, but that there is a, an investment in the local labor market here in Santa Maria and Santa Barbara County. But those are my two points. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Does staff have any comment on Ms. Olivera's observations?
Yes, I just would like to comment that as a concession, the request for reduced open space is, the city is mandated to allow the concession. We, there, there would have to be a finding of, I'd, I'd have to check my notes here, but it said health and safety, or other sort of hazard to, to public health to not grant that concession.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Heather Widdam, Assistant City Attorney, just building on what was just said, yeah, under state law, we are obligated to provide that concession unless we can show that it would somehow negatively impact public health and safety, and that's because this is an affordable housing project. And the state has determined that affordable housing projects, there's such a need in California for additional housing, that they are going to allow developers to, to do things. for additional housing, that they are going to allow developers to do things in order to get as much units built as possible, and sometimes that means that some of our regulations the state has mandated have to be kind of modified in order to accommodate affordable housing in our community. The other question about labor agreements or using local labor, that would be a major policy decision that the council would make that would apply to all projects in general or would have standards or parameters for when they would apply. And as of now, I don't believe the city has any such policies in place, so it wouldn't really be appropriate to apply something like that to one individual project. That would be a much larger policy discussion for the council.
Thank you very much. The screen has been taken over, so I don't see, I don't see all the people anymore. Ah, there we go. I don't see any more hands being raised regarding this project. So with that then, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any commission members to make any more, any additional questions or comments they have on the, on the project. If, if commission members are so inclined, we have a resolution that will need to be made and a motion. So Commissioner Seifert has his hand up first. I know probably beat Commissioner Lopez barely to the buzzer on that.
It was a raise. Thank you, Chair. You know, as I stated on the study session, I know we're bound by the state requirements. Donna Olivera was correct. The, the open space has been reduced, and we have no authority to change that if we can't find the right findings, which we don't believe we have. The parking has also been reduced along with those open spaces, which hopefully, the traffic report is correct, and because they're affordable, we won't have an issue. We already have an issue in that area according to one of the letters that we got, so I'm glad they're looking at at least adding those 50 spaces. The project is, I remember when it was brought to us, when it was 138 units, there was some question about the traffic, and it seems like we've done everything we can do to mitigate the effects of the traffic at those, at that corner. I'm glad to see that that's a crash gate and not an entrance or exit out on the Miller from the center of that project. I'm very happy that the applicant's willing to kind of spruce it up a little bit and make the Miller Street and Plaza's drives a little bit more attractive for us. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Seifert. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm a little torn, I'll be honest with you. I know we heard from the traffic engineer, and we learned a little bit more about the findings that were done through the traffic. I am still very concerned about Plaza, Miller, and Miller and Stoll, the effect of a future project and the future projects that will be coming online. But we need housing. We need housing. We need low-income housing. It's, it's, it's a tough one for me, but I understand we need the housing.
Thank you very much. I agree with both Commissioner Seifert and Commissioner Lopez. You know, we're, we're in a position where we are mandated certain things by the state. You know, we would, we would probably do things slightly differently if we, if we had the option, but we are forced to not have the option in many cases, and there are some elements of this that this falls within. It's a nice enough project, but it does, it does have a bit of concern about, about traffic flow and traffic pattern, and, yeah, I just hope that, hope that the studies hash out to, to, to the reality of life down the road when this, once this thing goes up. With that being said, I am looking for, if, if, once again, if we so desire, I am looking for a, for someone to push forward the motion, the resolution. Commissioner Seifert?
Okay. Oh, thanks for putting that up. I took a shot of it. By resolution, I would, I would go to approve an amendment, the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Centennial Square project.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right. Can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
I will abstain.
Chair Dickerson?
And then we'll need a motion, and don't forget whoever pushes the motion forward, that they include the changes that we were discussing. Anyone want to make, Commissioner Seifert?
Thank you, Chair. By motion, I would vote to approve the Plan Development Permit PD 2020-0009 for Centennial Square Apartments with, including the changes to the architecture and the colors that we talked about tonight at this hearing.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
I will also abstain on this.
Chair Dickerson?
Thank you very much. Good luck, gentlemen, and look forward to the thing moving forward. Okay, let's go on to the final, the final item, which is the oral reports from the planning commissioners and staff. Can we hear from staff?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. This is Dana Eadie. I was just going to go over the upcoming schedule with you, and before I do that, Commissioner Seifert, we can't really see you, and I was going to ask if maybe you closed the blinds behind you, it might help, we can see you better. Or light. Thank you, very, much better. So we don't have a study session tomorrow, that's been canceled. We also will not be having a planning commission hearing on August 18th, so that's canceled as well. So the next time that we're scheduled to meet will be a study session on August 19th, and that is to discuss a new Starbucks up on Main Street, near Highway 101 and Main Street. And then we also are looking at having a hearing September 1st, and that is the hearing that I was looking at having us back in chambers, although, you know, the COVID numbers are not improving at the moment. In fact, they're looking worse, so I'm just going to monitor that situation and continue to work with the city manager's office, and then I'll get back to you on that date.
Dana, this is Tim Seifert. On the 15th of September, I'll be out of town. Just to let you know, I don't know if you've got anything planned on that evening.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we don't have anything planned, but, but thank you. So that concludes the staff update for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any additional comments from commission members? All right. Commissioner Lopez?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. You unmuted.
I was just going to say goodnight.
He's going for it, he's going for it. All right. I officially close this meeting, and everyone can go back to their lives. Bye, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.